And get the meeting started. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. And our work session today is focused on discussions with our school partners in Buncombe County, the Asheville City Schools and the Buncombe County Schools and AB Tech. So I want to thank everyone from all the different school systems who are here today to talk with us about these important budget considerations that we're going to be digging into over the next couple of months. But before we do that, we're going to do a short, we have a short item on the Medicaid-assisted treatment for inmates. And Commissioner Jasmine Beach-Farar, I think, is going to tee us off on this item. So I'll turn it over to you, Jasmine.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. This is just a very brief kind of preview item. As part of our pre-meetings, we're sort of trying to preview items that will be on upcoming agendas. Chairman Newman, Commissioner Edwards, and I had requested on May 21st at our public meeting that we get an update related to our strategic priority around responding to the opiate crisis. Both an update on current strategies that are underway, on the update on the syringe-exchange project, which we heard about last about a year ago. And then an opportunity to share some information also about some of the emerging practices that we're seeing in other communities that were hit earlier and harder by the opiate crisis and sort of have had a longer runway to develop responses. One of those is introducing medicated-assisted treatment, which is considered the standard of care in treating substance abuse disorders specific to opiates these days into detention centers and jails so that folks who are residents there have access to that standard of care. I've had the opportunity to be in dialogue with folks at the sheriff's office and in other parts of the state who are looking at programs like this and from other states, seeing some very early promising data about access to medication-assisted treatment while folks are incarcerated, contributing to reduction in recidivism rates and helping people get connected into a continuum of care that helps them on the road to recovery and which we know is just such a critical journey for folks. So what just requested that as part of that presentation, we also get an update from the sheriff's office about their exploration of what it would be, what would be involved in piloting a medication-assisted treatment program here at the Buncombe County Detention Center. And just for other folks on commission, you all know I'm kind of a nerd, so I have a little bit of handouts to share with everyone, just to provide some basic information. Medication-assisted treatment has been around for a while with access to methadone, but excitingly, in the last couple of years, there have been some real breakthroughs in terms of creating additional medication options. And I think the more we understand about addiction as a disease, both better responses and more compassion driving that. So anyway, look forward to that presentation. A thank you to county staff and folks at the sheriff's office and partners in the community and across the state as well, who've been part of those dialogues and happy to talk to anyone. And I'll just leave stuff in everyone's office so folks can have some preliminary info before we have that conversation.
Great. Any questions? And that presentation on the 21st will also be sort of an informational presentation. We're not expecting to take any action at that meeting, but we'll get additional information from the sheriff, from staff. And we'll go from there.
Yep, exactly, just discussion level.
All right, great. Any questions? All right, all right, thanks Jasmine.
Yeah.
And thanks for your work on this. All right, let's go ahead and turn to the budget presentations. And I think the Asheville City Schools are gonna go first. So also just maybe just a quick process question on our end before we dive into it. So I think I saw a couple of different things about how long we expect the work session today to go. I think I saw four o'clock at one point, but I maybe saw five on another. So I just maybe wanted to get clarity on how long are we anticipating the work session to last this afternoon?
Four hundred and thirty.
Four thirty, all right, right in the middle, perfect. All right, we do have a regular meeting at five o'clock today, too, and we need a few minutes to get organized for that. So four thirty is when we'll plan to adjourn. All right, so Asheville City Schools, thanks for being here. And come on up and we'll get started.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for allowing us to share our information regarding our needs and desires for Asheville City Schools. I'm Denise Patterson, the superintendent, and I have some of my staff here with me today. If they would all wave so they can see who we are, so we are all here. And we also have our board chair and our vice chair that are with us here today.
Great, hi, thanks for being here.
We will begin with our presentation. I've been given some instructions here. And so I did also receive some of your questions, Chairman Newman, regarding the academic achievement. And I do appreciate our meetings so that we could share some of our information, so thank you for that, you and Ms. Pender as well. We do appreciate that. I just want to talk about our average daily membership. Our enrollment is projected to be for 2020, 4,330 students. And that is a projection enrollment for DPI. And here we have another projection. We are projected to have 328 kindergarteners, 1,771 elementary students, 888 middle school students, and 1,343 high school students. And as you can see, it's steadily been increasing, but we have seen a shift in some of our attendance as well regarding our student enrollment due to some students enrolling in the charter school as well. And we do have those numbers there. So I want to begin by talking about some of our needs, wants, or desires, as I mentioned earlier. Mental health is certainly something that is touching our hearts and definitely with our students today. And we do need some support personnel to support our students with their academics and also with their behavior. And so in North Carolina, they now have a title Emotional Instructional Support Staff for our students where they can be provided that balance with academic support as well as behavior support. That is impacting our students regarding their social, emotional, and behavior needs. And we really feel like if we have support staff in place for our students at all of our schools, that we will see our students achieve and that we will be able to provide assistance to our teachers and all of our other support staff who are providing instruction and support to our students in Asheville City Schools. Montford North Star Academy, that is a growing school. Next year, it could have at least 240 students. There will be an eighth grade class there. Therefore, we would need four teachers to cover math, science, social studies, and English Language Arts for our staff and our students. Also Asheville Primary School, it is a magnet school and the focus there is Montessori. Two teachers are needed there as well as two teacher assistants. And that program is very unique because it's multi-age. And so as you are shifting with the classes, that is the reason that we need the teachers there, because it's growing as far as the multi-age level. And just a reminder about House Bill 90. We did not change our class sizes. We maintained those at the state average or state size, but just wanted to draw your attention to those class sizes. But in Nashville City Schools, we did maintain the state class size. Want to share a little bit about our local projected budget. As you can see here, a majority of our budget is spent on personnel, staff, salaries, and benefits. Another portion is spent on purchasing services. Another portion is on capital outlay, and I'll discuss a little bit more of that later. And then we also have some on transfers and supplies and materials. One of our major concerns that we have in just trying to make sure that we are making the configurations regarding the state, there has been a major increase with the salary, health benefits, retirement for all of our employees. So this does total almost $1 million. And it has increased over the past few years. Chairman Newman, you had asked previously when we talked, what were the percentages that had increased? And so we did have some information on that. I believe that might be in your packet. You did ask about that, like what was the increase? So we do have that. Our hiring incentive program, we really believe that we want strong applicants in our school district. Some areas of need are exceptional children's teachers and math teachers. And in order to recruit those teachers, we have decided to pay them a signing bonus, and we do pay that locally. So we do have a process for the teachers to receive that monies. And we have found a great benefit in having that sign-on bonus to recruit diverse teachers in Asheville City Schools. And so one need would be the EC teachers, as I mentioned, and math teachers as well. We also focus on minority teachers, but this incentive program is regarding those two core subject areas.
A question.
Yes.
How do you determine what the signing bonus is?
How do we determine it? Our HR director's here, Ms. Hatcher, would you share a little bit about our signing bonus, please?
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Basically, what our sign-on bonus is, we looked at the needs and how difficult it was to recruit EC and math teachers. So when we looked at that area and I worked additionally with our former executive director of finance, and we determined basically what it would require to get the person here, and we came up with a $2,000 amount.
Could you speak into the mic a little bit more, please?
I'm sorry.
That's fine, yeah, thanks.
I don't know how much of that you heard. We came up with a $2,000 amount. And with that amount, what happens is they'll get the initial $1,000 when they come in in August, and the remainder $2,000 will be paid in April. I'm sorry, the remaining $1,000, I just gave them $3,000. The remaining $1,000 will be paid in April.
Okay, that's a good answer, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, stay, because I think you'll need to answer this. What signing bonus are you paying African-American teachers?
Sir, currently, we do not have one. Currently, Commissioner Whiteside, we do not have one.
In spite of the fact that we have so few African-American teachers?
That is correct.
Thank you. Can't believe that.
Looking at our revenue sources, just wanted to point out our funding for that. A lot of that is based locally, and as you can see, the amount for the state, federal, and fund balance and transfers. And we do access our fund balance. We do look at that monies, we do make decisions around that, so we do access that to support our needs in Asheville City Schools. Information on the revenue spent. With the requested amount, that would be an additional $2 million plus. And then for the projected district supplemental sales tax, as you can see there, that's a little over $10 million plus. And then the projected sale tax, a little over $3 million. And some information from there. We realize that that $2 million, the little over $2 million, that's that supplemental sales tax plus, we understand that that's money that's generated from the county and that's appropriated to us. And in looking at our charter school numbers, as you can see here, I think we, this is our percentage that we end up paying for our charter school students. And we do have to make sure that we have a budget line to make sure that we account for that money as well. Some of our capital outlay needs, and Mr. Sims is our director of maintenance, if he would come up, and we will discuss our capital outlay needs. In looking at some of our safety needs for Asheville High School, we do want some more door-controlled access to our schools. We really feel like that would add an additional safety feature. And as you can see, there's that amount there. Jones Park, need to update that playground at IRB Jones Elementary School. Asheville Primary School, the domestic hot water system, it would be needed for the entire building and replacement of the courtyard sewer.
On the previous slide, are those capital projects, are those projects that could be funded through the School Capital Commission funding source?
Commissioner Newman, eventually, we could do that. Yes, those could be funded through that commission, the capital commission. These are our highest needs currently, and so that's the reason that most of what you will see here is the ones that we have pulled out that needs addressing, you know, pretty immediately.
Okay.
So were those, just a question. When we had our consideration at the School Capital Commission meeting, were these on that, if they were immediate, immediate needs?
Yes, I think there were, and some that we could do.
Because I don't remember. I don't remember if they were or not, Chairman. Do you remember?
I do not remember that off the top of my head. They obviously weren't on the project list. That was funded in the last cycle, but I can't remember if they were further down the list, and we just didn't have the funds to get to them in that funding cycle, or if they were not on the list. I don't remember.
That is correct.
They were down.
Okay, so they were on the list, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
That's Asheville Primary School. Did you have any questions about Asheville Primary, those needs at that school? And then Advanced Elementary School, looking at the roof and the drains, mechanical room pipe insulation replacement, also with the circulation pumps refurbishing, and elevator replacement. So those are some needs, additional needs at Advanced Elementary School. And then at Claxton, have our main building roof replacement and the main building, the North Main wall repair that we're focusing on. And so those needs were listed on our sheet that were just a little further down, but just some upcoming needs that we want to address.
If I'm not wrong, the money for these repairs can come out of Article 36, I do believe.
Okay.
That wouldn't be out of the basic county budget. It would be taken from Article 36 money.
Thank you. And I did want to also, before I take any questions, just wanted to talk a little bit about our needs and around our achievement gap, if I could just have a moment to do that. And you may have some questions around that, but still wanted to talk about that just a little bit.
So before we move to that, on the capital, okay, let me make sure that I'm still in a little bit of whirlwind coming in just a few minutes late. But so are you requesting those as a one-time pay for the city schools from the county budget? Or are you planning on wanting to borrow those funds and are you requesting the county pay that debt service, or are you just asking for the money?
That would be our normal capital outlay projects that we would ask from the county commissioners. So that's, that would be the category that they would be in.
Okay, so is that in the $2,090 request?
No, no, that is not.
So you'll get to the total here later, right?
Yes, we will.
Okay, thanks.
Any more questions?
We'll get that added up. My finance people are adding that up, and we will get that added up. I did want to talk about our achievement gap and some of the things that we're doing since there are a lot of needs around personnel, because that's very important to us to make sure that as we are addressing needs, that you understand our needs, ask and request for our personnel. You already have some information, and we've already discussed our gap that's been prevalent in our district for more than 20 years. And in the recent past two years, we've had a heavy focus on it since I have been here in the role as superintendent. So you have been previously sent that information. I do have some dropout information. Dr. Ayers, I believe you have that information for dropout. I just wanted to share that information around the dropout rate overall and with our minority students.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So I wanted to share the information that we had regarding dropout rate for the past, I have a 20-year look at that, but specifically comparing it to other districts. So for example, you have this linked in the document that you have. The dropout rate for 2017-18, this past year, was 1.72 percent. And that is one of the lowest years in the past 20 years, in the past two decades. Minority students for our school district, we had less than 10 on that dropout for the 2017-18 year. Looking at the previous years, in 2016-17, our dropout rate was 3.04 percent. So we nearly cut that in half and had 21 minority students who dropped out in 1617. I'm going to go back just a couple more years, so you'll see a five-year trend. 2015-16, our dropout rate was 1.99 percent. And there were 11 minority students that dropped out in the 2015-16 school year. And then the 2014-15 school year, 2.94 percent students were dropped out, and that would be 12 students. So you see an inconsistency there, but right now, we are at the lowest we've been in a very, very long time with fewer than 10 students that dropped out in the 2017-18 year.
What percent is that of African-American students? You said 10 the number, but what percentage is that of the number of students in the district?
It's less than.
Of the African-American students?
Less than 10, less than 10 students are minorities, so that would be all students of color that dropped out is less than 10.
And what percentage, what is the percentage of the African-American students?
I would have to calculate that.
Because I would like to know that, yeah. And especially comparing it to other districts in the state.
I will get that for you.
Okay, thanks.
The percentages you recited, that's for the student body population as a whole.
Yeah.
Right?
Right, correct.
And so is that for the, when you calculate that, is that for all the 12th grade? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that would be Asheville High School and Cilsa students, our two high schools.
So in terms of when we say the percentage, though, that doesn't just mean the percentage of seniors, that means the percentage of students, right? So most students drop out, you know, when they're in high school. So it's not, that's not a percentage of seniors, unfortunately, right? That's a percentage of the.
That is correct.
Entire student body in any given year.
All that drop out, no matter regardless of the grade.
From first grade to 12th grade.
Correct.
But what's?
Though you see primarily students don't drop out until eighth grade or up.
Right, right. So if you have, I guess I'm just trying to back into sort of like, what's the percentage that don't graduate? You know what I mean? So if you're saying you have like 12 different years.
Right.
Any of those years you could drop out, and you have a 1.99 percent chance of dropping out that year, whether you're in first grade or 12th grade, of course, mostly it's, you know, 10th, 11th, 12th, or whatever. So you have to take the number and then multiply it by 12 to kind of get a sense for like, how many of those older students, you know, are dropping out in a year?
So would you like for me to find the information that is only the seniors that are dropping out? Is that what you're requesting? I just want to clarify. As well as just the African-American students?
Now, let me ask a question. Unless it's changed, now, they can't drop out of school until they're 16 years old. Has that changed?
No, that hasn't changed.
Okay, so nobody would drop out until 16, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, but the percentages are looking at the entire student body, not just those of the older students, right? I'm just trying to figure out what the statistics of the percentage kind of means.
Oh, I see what you mean.
I think it must be 16. It's 1.72 percent of all students age 16 and up.
Right.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Is that right?
Not of all students.
Yeah, yeah.
Just of 16 and up?
16 and up.
Right, because only students 16 and above can drop out. Yes, that's correct.
So if we can just get the percentage of, we know the raw number of students of color who are dropping out, if we can just convert that into the percentage.
Percentage of the students who come, right.
That would be great, then we can have the comparative.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Great.
And Chairman Newman, we would also have this document available to you, so you can click on the links, so we can make sure to send it to you or Ms. Barnett or whomever, and you can have access to all of that information if you would like it.
So Chairman, let me ask you a question. We're going to be here till 4:30, right? So if they get that answer while we're here and they bring it back, I don't think it'd be out of order for them to come to the podium and give it to us, would it?
You know, I just want to make sure each school gets a chance to kind of present their full presentation. So if we get through with that, I think that'd be great, but I don't want to interrupt some else's presentation, I guess.
And I'm watching my time, so I'll jump to some of the things that we are doing to address our achievement gap. But I knew you wanted that information because those were a couple of your top questions. Some of the things that we are doing in Asheville City Schools to address the gap, we do have an equity plan. Our district equity team, we meet at least twice a week, sometimes it's once a week, but here lately, we have been meeting a couple times a week to discuss equity and play some actions around that. We are continuing to work with the Integrated Comprehensive System, those consultants, ICS. We also have been in collaboration with Dr. Chance Lewis from UNC Charlotte and Dream Builders with Dr. Kenston Griffin. Those companies have really been instrumental in helping us look at equity regarding race, regarding resources, just a variety of things to make sure that we are providing equitable services for all of our students, for all of our staff in our district. And so we do have a plan for that. We also have a district achievement plan, and we review it on a regular basis. We've set goals to make sure that we are attempting to close the achievement gap. Also, each school has a student achievement plan. So whatever the district has, whatever type of plan, we also make sure that each school has one. We have an administrative team meeting tomorrow, and in that meeting, as all of our other meetings, our principals will have access to their student achievement plan. Our district staff collaborates with them, and we actually look at some information. I would like for you to look at some, just one piece of data, just really quick, because that's been a question about how do we maintain and monitor that data? So I think Ms. Het and Dr. Ayers, you have a link that you can allow the audience to kind of glimpse at of a school. We've hidden the school name and student names, but I want you to see how all 10 of our schools are maintaining the data. And then they'll give you some information about how many of our students are performing below grade level that are in the EC subgroup and that are in the black subgroup, because that has been one of our questions. So if those ladies could come up, and as they are coming up, I will just continue to say that, again, it's a subgroup analysis, and just want you to see that. We are trying to make sure that we communicate information to our stakeholders, our families, parents, to you all, our city council commissioners. So we are making extreme efforts to send out weekly communications and hold equity collaboration meetings with everyone.
Dr. Patterson?
Yes.
Can you explain EC, please?
Yes, it's exceptional children. Those students may have a challenge in being on grade level with their other peers, and so they've been identified and they are exceptional children. And they can be identified in the area of math, writing, sometimes behavior, reading, so it depends on their area of need. Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. And I will let them just show some information because that was one of our questions, and then that's my last point, unless you have any other questions.
Good afternoon. I'm not sure exactly how to connect my computer to this screen, so.
You're looking in the wrong direction.
Yeah. Here we go.
Thank you.
Does it have an HDMI?
No.
Okay, does it have? One of these?
No.
What does it have? Is there a website you can go to that I can just put on the screen in the back?
Uh, maybe, she may have an HDMI, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, you're fine. Well, then I have an answer for you.
I can talk while we're transitioning, so we don't waste your time. So what we've done is we've created for each school a document that lists every single student by name who is either African-American or an exceptional, in the exceptional children's program. And what we have is all their historical data and then the projection of what they're projected to perform at the end of the school year. And then we've also added any of their other categorizations, if they're academically gifted, if they have a 504 plan, their attendance rates, their suspension rates, et cetera, so that the school teams can sit down and look at each of those students individually that the school teams can sit down and look at each of those students individually through a comprehensive lens of their historical data. And then, they enter what they're doing for every single student, so that they can see, is there a child who may have fallen through the cracks in terms of interventions and support? Or are there students that have things in place that maybe are not as effective? So, it's allowing the schools to look really at the individual level for both of these groups of students.
And I wanted to add to that, that there's such depth in doing this. And this is not something that is completed and just left. We revisit this at our administrative team meetings every month, so that we are able to hone in on those students, those African-American students and those exceptional children that need the additional support. So, what you're seeing is an example of one of our spreadsheets with students' names removed and numbers removed. This is a secondary school. So, go back to there, right, go back to the EVOs.
So, we're not able to read that, so-
Right, I was gonna talk you through, I can, I think I can enlarge it.
Did you have a question? Did you want us to?
No, I just couldn't see, so it was not very effective. So, just thought I'd get you to blow it up, and you did. So, there you go.
So, you will see, I'm just gonna look at student number four, because it's the one on the top, that that student is an African-American student. They are also in the exceptional children's program, and they're labeled with an LD, which is a learning disability. They need some additional, they need additional support. The next data that you see is a projected probability that the state generates, saying how likely it is that they will pass the end-of-grade test. And you have that probability.
Okay, hang on just a minute.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, take me back, since you're in the mic. Take me back to, put me on number four again.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Okay, which one is that? That's there?
Yes, sir.
All right.
So, this is a male African-American student who is in the exceptional children's program.
Okay.
A 7th grade student. And then, that category, that's EVOs, math and reading, that is what the state is projecting, the probability that that student will make a Level 3, which is passing the end-of-grade test. So, you see that projected probability.
There's a 3 percent chance?
Yes, sir. In mathematics, and a 64.3 percent chance of making a Level 3 in reading. The next sets of data-
Let me ask you a question. So, I mean, that's 3 percent in math. So, how do you translate a spreadsheet into, what are you doing for that kid?
That's what we're gonna share with you, is further on over. I'd love to share that with you. So, we're monitoring the progress of the student throughout the year with these assessments, called NC check-ins, and they are from the state. So, they parallel what the end-of-grade testing looks like, and they are taken quarterly. So, this student in mathematics, this is the percentage of correct, so 16 percent, .32 percent, and 20 percent. Now, you may be thinking that student is not making progress, but, but mathematics is a little different, because you're assessing different goals each quarter. So, you can't compare the first one to the second one. Reading, on the other hand, should be fluid, because they continue to work on the same reading standards throughout the year. This student is scoring in the 50s, 60s. In the last NC check-in, this student scored a 90 percent. So, you see that the intervention, some interventions that we have with this student seem to be very effective.
I, I would say they're appear to be effective in the reading.
That's accurate, yes.
But I'm not seeing they're effective at all in the math. Am I, am I accurate, or, I'm not trying to put you on the spot at all, I'm just-
That would be an accurate assumption.
Trying to find out, you know, how do you provide help for, 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 for this young man? And, so, if you can, as you go through, is if you can speak to that.
Sure.
You know, and, you know, maybe real examples or something that would be helpful.
I actually have a question, and I think we'll circle around to this. Commissioner Whitesides and I are serving on the Equity Collaboration Committee with Asheville City Schools. And at one of our most recent meetings, Dr. Howard spoke, in conjunction, I think, with some principals, about some Monday morning meetings that are in place, that are really zeroing in on some of these students and the wraparound services that are needed, that may be helpful for others to hear.
Yes, Dr. Howard's here, and he can share that information. And also, Ms. Nguyen is here, and she can provide some additional details as well.
Thank you.
And while he's coming up, she'll talk about the, Melissa Het will talk about the interventions, and then, Dr. Howard can talk about the wraparound services.
Thanks so much.
So, as you see, the next column is about the interventions, and this student is getting inclusion math services, as well as some social-emotional support. Inclusion is when an exceptional children's teacher goes into the regulated classroom, and the two teachers are there together, supporting students. And so, I think you're exactly right, that what we're seeing is that the reading is growing, but the math is stagnant. So, what we'd wanna do, or what this team at the school would wanna do, is have that conversation about what is working with reading that we can continue to support. It may be that that social-emotional piece is allowing the student to access more of the curriculum and the instruction. And then, why is math stagnant? This student's categorization is with a learning disability, so I would suspect that his plan says that disability may be in math, and that may be related to why he's not growing. But some of the things that may happen there is some math tutoring during lunch or after school. We have some, a great after-school program for middle school students that have some hands-on, mathematical, STEAM-focused IRL program. We may refer the student to that program. So, the, the tool is allowing teachers to really individualize and make sure that those kinds of conversations are happening, and that the interventions are put in place for
Good afternoon. How's everybody? I hope you're all doing well. Thank you for your time. So, we are working within our district to provide comprehensive mental health and social-emotional support services. One of the reasons that we are asking for more behavioral, social-emotional support workers in our district, that does a couple of things. That allows us to hire individuals from a lot of communities that are affected from the achievement gap, and we can put in mentors and support for children there. We also have evolved our gender support plan for all students, to make sure that we are covering all issues of identity. We also are making, working with our, you know, Buncombe County DHHS and our partners, Family Preservation Services, to provide comprehensive mental health services and to stay coordinated with DSS. As you all know, we're very married. And when kids come into crisis and there's issues, we have to work with many agencies to provide that wraparound service. Now, once we get those services put in place, and we continue to have effective strategies around that, achievement will improve. However, I wanna just be very clear and transparent that, you know, all of our agencies need to be together to make these things happen. Because, right now, we're facing, just in February, payer source changes with mental health and with some of our agencies, you all well know. So, there's a lot of leaps and bounds that we have to go over, to make sure that kids have the full mental health assessments. We are also looking at clinics and schools and increasing nurses. We're working with Mahak as well for that, on that comprehensive health assessment. As you know, a lot of things affect achievement, from poverty to health inequality that happens here in Buncombe County. But I assure you that we're working very effectively with our community partners and you all, to provide those services. And if we are successful in getting what we need to better serve those students, I think that you will see a reduction in the achievement gap and full support for a lot of our students that are, that are affected by those things. So, we're very, working very hard to, to make sure those things happen and those connections are made, and it's gonna take us some time. But we need your support. I believe that it's a community effort, and I think together we can get there. We're, you know, we're small enough, but big enough community to make things happen for all kids. Thank you.
That concludes our presentation, unless you have some additional questions. I know we shared some information that we needed, but also, I wanted you to know and understand what we are doing to address our academic achievement gap. And it takes all of us to get this done, and we do appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
I have one last question, it's just more of a statement, anything, didn't really require, I don't think, a response back. Have you looked at, I would just encourage you to look at other models. New City Christian School is one that is, I think, has been very successful in, in addressing the achievement gap. And, and just looking at other models, working together, getting outside of, you know, whatever's, whatever's considered normal when you're, when you're trying to meet these needs. Thanks.
Thank you for that recommendation.
I also want to say thank you to you and to Ashley Michelle Thublin. I feel completely aware of what is happening in the district with the increased communication and transparency via the Communications Department. So, thank you so much for that effort. I feel like I have a great handle on what's happening in schools.
Thank you.
I have one last question. Tell me, you know, when I look at the numbers and I see that we continue to lose to charter schools and private schools, especially when I see the building that's going on in the community, you know, with charter schools, what are we doing to retain these students? You know, are we looking at why we're losing students? Why do students leave the system? I mean, what are we doing, you know, to curb that? Because, you know, it concerns me from, I guess, from a financial point, you know, every year, we see the request for more money, but we also see less students. And I know you can't go hand in hand in education, I understand that. But still, I think it's important that at some point in time, we've gotta curb this, because if not, if we keep going the way we're going, 10 years, 15 years, we might not have Asheville City Schools.
We share your same thoughts, Commissioner Whiteside, and we are continuing to examine our numbers. And we do a lot of promoting with our schools. All of our schools do have a theme, so we are constantly promoting what we have to offer. We do see some students return to our district as well, but that is something that we do continue to monitor. But that's also a trend across the state, with students going to charter schools, private schools, or even being homeschooled. So, those are our major competitors. But one of the things that we have to do, and that we are currently doing, again, we have to advertise and sell ourselves and market ourselves, and that's something that we are currently working on. And as the year approaches, for the upcoming year, as we are enrolling students, we've been in our enrollment season, we monitor those numbers. And our team will be meeting to consider what other efforts that we can do to retain our students. So, that is something that is definitely on our hearts and minds, because we want our students to stay here in Asheville City Schools. We don't want to see that trend where our district won't exist, and that is not our goal. Our goal is to keep all of our students, but sometimes our families do have some other need or desire that they want. We are a public education system, and there are certain standards that we have to meet according to the state. But that is something that we will continue to examine, and do welcome your collaboration, if you have any thoughts or ideas while we're at the table with that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Patterson. Just a follow-up question around the, the, the topic of the achievement gap and issues of equity more generally. Are you all implementing sort of a, 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 a program that has been tested and tried in other communities and is being kinda custom-fit to Asheville City? Or is this more of a amalgam of different strategies that are being pieced together? I just, I'd like to be able to learn more about it. I appreciate the work that Amanda and I'll do in that committee, but just to really be up to speed. And if you could speak a little bit more to sort of that, that kind of 30,000-foot view of what's driving the work around, particularly that question of racial equity and closing the achievement gap?
We have researched other districts. That is something that we always do and look at different programs. But as far as looking at one school district and what they're doing and modeling after that wholly, we haven't done that exactly. But what we do is take components from some of those school districts and see what fits in Asheville City Schools. So, our next goal would be to visit other districts, other schools that have our same different demographics, like needs and challenges, to see what we can learn from those districts who are excelling. So, that's something that we do like, look at. But currently, not a particular model, but some of the pieces of that model that we are looking at. For example, some school systems have after-school programs in all of their elementary schools. That's something that we are very interested in. While we do have some programs, we're looking for something consistent that will meet the needs in the area of, for example, math, and that will provide our students with transportation, and something that will be able to occur during the school year, as well as in the summertime. And we have seen some other districts that are currently implementing some of those enrichment programs, and that is something that we would like to explore even more. We do realize all six may not be able to have it at one time. And so, we realize that maybe we'll have to try one or two schools to implement it and figure out that funding, and then, the next year, consider some other schools to add on. But that's one model that most elementary schools have, is that component of enrichment in the summertime and also after-school. So, you have that continual learning in the process for all of our students.
Thank you. And, and just a quick note, earlier today, Commissioner Presley and Whitesides and myself and some folks in this room, we had an Early Child Education Committee meeting. And I was excited that we're starting to have this, a similar sort of mirrored conversation at that level as well, in terms of thinking about, from the earliest days that kids are getting access to education as, as young toddlers and infants even, is, is how we're thinking about and centering these questions around equity, and particularly, kids who've been exposed to trauma early on. So that by the time they're entering kindergarten, hopefully, every child in Buncombe County's had a chance to have the support they need around those issues. So, I, I'm excited at the level of commission and the ways we're partnering with different local institutions, to be seeing some more opportunities to kind of be connecting, to connecting these dots, and, and having hopefully more of a consistent through-line as we look at these. So, thank you for the work y'all are doing.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
So, as expected, we are not gonna have time to talk about all the different parts of the budget in this one meeting. So, a cou- so, a couple of questions. One is, and you've touched on some of these things, but would it be possible for us to ask for you to provide answers to the questions that I submitted to the schools in writing?
Yes, I do have that available. Who would you like for me to send that to?
You can just, you can send it to me, and I'll make sure we, we circulate it.
And we have that ready right now, so we will push the button on that at this moment.
Okay, great, thank you. You know, the, and, and, you know, and we may very well need to, you know, carve out additional time, if there's additional discussion. I think that, you know, the one thing that I really, at a high level, would like to kind of come out of this budget process with a better understanding of, is, you know, usually the, the budget processes, I think we have with, with our schools, and, you know, and it's not that different with our different county departments, is, because a lot of what the schools and government has to do is a lot of what you did last year, right? A lot of stuff is just kind of keeping, you know, keeping the operations going. And a lot of the budget attention goes into, you know, what's different? What are we gonna do next year? Are there some new programs that we wanna do? Here's what they would cost, here's the justification for them. And we, you know, we spend time talking about those, those different items. But, you know, one question a lot of people in the community have asked me, as it relates to the city schools, is about the supplemental funding the city schools get, because it's, you know, it's a very significant source of funding. We're fortunate to have one of the best-funded school districts in the state of North Carolina. And, so, I would really like to have a better understanding of, just at a high level, what does that additional local funding really enable the city schools to do that others, you know, similar school districts just, just can't do? And I think we all understand parts of it, but rather than just kind of talking about a few of the kind of new things that we wanna do and, and things like that, I would really like to have a, a kind of a good understanding of, what are we doing as a district now with the supplemental funding, you know, compared to other districts that, that don't? Because I, I, and people have asked me that, and I said, "That's a great question." And, so, let's, I'd really like to dig into that. So, that's one part, I'm hoping we can get more information on. All right, Commissioners, do you have any other questions before we move on to the county schools? All right, Dr. Patterson, thank you very much.
Thank you, and we look forward to more meetings and collaborating. So, I would love to set up another time for us to meet with some members of your team, and we can certainly explore all the questions that you've asked. But as far as the information, the other non-questions that you have, I can get that to you right at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody have a copy of our PowerPoint in front? Because I, I know it's difficult. We're gonna put a lot of data, put some graphs and numbers, so I, I think for, for accuracy purposes, having that in front of you, and certainly, copies are available for anyone in the audience that wishes to, to examine these further. and certainly copies are available for anyone in the audience that wishes to examine these further. You know, I can't help myself, 30-plus years, sitting back and listening to some of the most recent questions I asked of Dr. Patterson and specifically focused on some of our most challenged students in our school system. It doesn't make any difference if it's Asheville City, if it's Buncombe County, if it's McDowell, if it's Henderson County. And I've got to say this, there's no easy fix. There's money that can be spent that's flushed down the toilet. It's going to take a lot of effort. It's going to take resources. It's going to take interventions. And Dr. Big E, I know him as Big E, is exactly right. You've got to look at those kids as a whole person. Don't just pull the academics out. You look at an EC child, Mr. Belcher, you had a good question there. And the chances of proficiency of him scoring a certain score on a test with one seated test administration, that's not what it's about. It's how are you growing that young man? Because every child, regardless of the challenges that they face, you can grow them. And nothing takes the place of teachers in those classrooms, teachers like Paula Denga at an elementary school, that meets on a daily basis and looks at data. It's no different Nashville City than Buncombe County, and tries to identify, what do we need to do to help that young person grow? They may not reach the proficiency that a gifted student will on the test score. I mean, that's reality, but they can grow. So, again, I apologize, I'm all soapbox. Thank you for allowing us to present this afternoon. I've got numerous district-level leadership staff. I also have six of our seven board members here. I've got a lot of info for you. I'm not going to take the time to introduce them, but I will say that at certain points in this presentation, I may ask them to clarify and give a little bit more data to what I present. As I go through this presentation, please feel free to stop me, ask questions. Let me clarify to the best of my ability. Again, a lot of information I'm going to put in front of you. So, let's get started. Slide one, Ms. Lopez. Ooh, that's blinking at me, that's like a, ooh, about that. It looks okay from a distance. School performance. This is a significant indicator of what we as a county and as a community invest in. And while it's not the only indicator of success, it's a very important one. And our performance, if you look at that particular slide in front of you, our performance is measured under the guidelines of federal legislation called ESAA, where Every Student Succeeds Act. And within that focus, we have identified subgroups. And I'm going to show you from a proficiency and growth standpoint what our subgroups look like. In total, there are 23,400 students in Buncombe County Schools. We are the 13th largest school system in the state. Under our subgroups, we have six that are based upon ethnicity. In Buncombe County Schools, less than 1% of our students are American Indian. 1.3% Asian. 6.8% are Black or African-American. 17.4% identifies Hispanic-Latino. Multi-race, two or more races, 4.5%. And then, our white or Caucasian students, that population is our highest, it's at 69.7%. Now, sometimes I get this question because we have a pretty significant population, especially in the urban district, of Moldavian and Ukrainian students. And they also fall under that category because I do get that question asked. They fall under the subcategory of white, subgroup of white. Now, this is important to understand too, because when you start talking about achievement gap and gaps, you've got to go beyond ethnicity. And we've got three categories where any one of those students in that ethnicity group could fall. And the first is economically disadvantaged. In fact, that's one of the primary concerns we have in Buncombe County because 50.3% of our students fall under economically disadvantaged. Doesn't make any difference what color their skin is, but they fall under some real challenges from a socioeconomic standpoint. We also have English-language learners, students that come to us that barely speak English. And that equates to about 7% of our students in Buncombe County Schools. That's a challenge, talking about support and resources, not only for those students, but their families. In most cases, the children speak much better English than the families. In many cases, the students become the teachers for their parents. Students with disabilities, and I want us to pay attention to that subgroup. 14% of our students in Buncombe County fall under, and you heard EC, exceptional children, students with disabilities, same category. So, those are the subgroups that we're going to look at. Next slide. You have to really take a look on your paper with this one because I apologize, it's hard to read that, it's color-coded. We're going to do the best that we possibly can. Now, remember proficiency. And I showed you a formula previously, 80/20. And that's important because as we are measured on performance, 80% of that grade is on proficiency. Proficiency I would measure with you if I walked up and handed you a single test right now. In most cases, it's done at the end of the school year. We're almost close to the end of the school year, so testing is right around the corner. Not growth, not improvement, but just one-time proficiency. So, when you look at that, what you see is, well, first off, let me talk about the green line because that's our English-language learners, I just talked about that group. You see a spike. The reason, we'd love to take credit for that spike in improvement, but the reality of it is the federal government changed the category, changed the guidelines for the category. So, it's a different set of students that were tested under that category that last year. But they did have a nice spike in performance. The other thing that you'll see if you look at that, and again, that's reading for Buncombe County School students. And it also measures five years of proficiency. And it's compared on the right side with the state average. So, you've got comparisons right there in front of you. You'll note that our white and black student populations, both of them, perform just under the state in reading. That's something we're looking at very closely with our specialists at the district level, which then translate to what's taking place in our professional learning communities in each school, especially at the elementary level. For the total number of students in Buncombe County, for the subgroups of male students, female students, Hispanic students, and the economically disadvantaged students, we perform higher than the state. That's good. But again, we've got some challenges. And consistent though, and this is something that's going to hold true not only in Buncombe County, but across the entire state. And again, when we start talking about gaps, what I would say to you is one of the greatest gaps we've got is with our students with disabilities. Because across the state, they score the lowest in terms of proficiency. Now, I'm going to show you some growth figures that are much more optimistic, but that's a challenge. Now, I'll also tell you that there's some philosophical issues that go along with that. Because the most serious learning disabled child that we have or that you have in any school in North Carolina is held to the same standards as the academically gifted. Now, is that fair? But on proficiency, that's what we see. But that is a challenge, and we can't forget that. Okay, let's move on to the next slide. In math, proficiency is similar to reading. The majority of our subgroups are either similar to, or they exceed the state's average performance. And that's over a five-year span. And again, check the comparisons, Buncombe County on the left, North Carolina on the right. Next slide reflects high school biology proficiency. And as you can see, and I can promise you as a former high school principal at Reynolds High School, we've struggled in years previously with biology and with that biology test. We've struggled to reach the state averages. That says we've experienced significant improvements in more recent years and compare overall quite favorably to the state's average. Now, again, we talk about new programs. I heard that referenced. One thing that has a lot of promise for us in Buncombe County are STEM labs that we've begun in the kindergarten that are in all of our elementary schools. And even though it's not tied in directly with the biology exam that they take 10th grade, I believe it'll have an influence. Again, the key is providing those programs as early, that support as early as possible in that child's educational career.
Dr. Baldwin, I have a question.
Yes.
Because I'm not familiar with all these different specific tests. So, biology and science, is there a separate science in the year test?
There is. There is a sci, the science test, Ms. Swanger, make sure I'm on target, is administered at the 5th grade and 8th grade.
Okay. And then with reading, there's also a separate English for different grades as well.
English reading is grades 3 through 8. Math grades 3 through 8. Now, once you get into high school, there are more specific courses. Math 1, Math 2, Math 3. English 2 is the measure at the high school level.
So, the presentation doesn't hit on every single test, but it's just kind of showing us some examples of some of the different subjects.
We would be here another hour if I put everything up there. But I just want to show you, we do have that information. It gives you a comparison I think is very valuable. Where are we? Because when you allocate money to us, there's an accountability factor there, and we understand that. So, the performance is important for you as well as for us.
I have two questions before moving forward.
Sure.
Has this data, particularly with the economically disadvantaged students, been broken down by race and the same data run? Terms of test performance?
We can. It normally does not come like that because, again, we could have a student that falls under the American Indian population. But now, again, you've got to remember, there has to be so many administrations of a test for that subgroup to even exist under ESAA.
Sure, sure.
But we could break that down to show.
That might be helpful so we can compare what we've seen from our previous presentation to this.
Sure.
My second question is, is this also broken down and can be shared by sub-district within Buncombe County Schools? Irwin, Owen, North Buncombe.
By schools, absolutely.
By sub-district or if that's what you call it, or if I need to call it something else.
Well, there's six districts in Buncombe County, so we could look at it by district, probably a better.
That might be better than the other, but it may be helpful. I mean, 23,000 students, and putting them all in here may not necessarily give us the most accurate picture of what each district.
It's going to certainly show you some different challenges in different districts.
At least for me.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Now, I talked about proficiency, but I'd also argue that when that 80/20 formula was devised, it put some of the communities that were just referenced at a tremendous disadvantage. Because if you take, especially in low socioeconomic areas, you're going to find across the state, and I could have brought about 10 slides to show that statewide, that there is a direct relationship between those scores on proficiency and the socioeconomic status of those students. Very clear, direct relationship. So, the good news is, in both the House budget that was recently passed and what I understand from the Senate budget, that in both of those, they have integrated a change in the formula, 50/50, which we applaud, 50% proficiency, 50% growth. We're going to talk about growth, which I would argue is the most important thing to talk about because that's what learning's based on, your improvement, your growth. Also, the formula itself is changing 50 to 50, but the scale, the 15-point scale, law is, the law in place right now shifts that to a 10-point scale, which would have significant results across the state. Again, within both budgets, my understanding is that that 15-point scale is being etched essentially in stone permanently. So, those are good things. Back to growth by subgroup. What I would say to you is that, I'm going to let you read the language on the table below. This is color-coded. This is one of those fun slides to look at because if you can, if you get lost in the words, you can always just go to the colors because it tells you all. Let me put it in simple Tony Ballin terms. Simply put, green meets, or green means that we met expectations for growth for that particular subgroup. Blue means that we actually exceeded what we expected for growth or improvement for that subgroup. And red, I got caution, my leadership staff not to say red is bad, so I won't. Instead, I'll say red is not what we hoped for. So, that gives you again, and we're looking at reading. And again, this is across the board in Buncombe County, measures grades 3 through 8. And you can see, again, and this is 2017, '18, this most recent growths that we have, growth scores we have. Let's move on to math.
And that's for, that's for one year, that's looking back at this year.
That's for the one year, right, our most recent results. On math, five of our subgroups achieved expected growth, and six of the subgroups actually exceeded expectations. We're extremely pleased with what's going on in math education. And I think a lot of the credit, Ms. Swanger, really goes toward instructional coaches and what's taking place in terms of our math curriculum at the central office level, all the way embedded into the classroom. Ms. Swanger, you agree? Anything you want to add regarding math?
I think having special development inside the classroom, that one-on-one support has made a huge difference in our performance. I hope you can keep that.
My mom taught math for 42 years, she'd been so proud to hear me say that. She's no longer with us, but I know she heard it. Okay, let's move on to science. And again, Chairman Newman, that is grades 5 and 8. That actually shows that six of our subgroups grew according to what we expected, and four of the subgroups grew beyond those expectations. Again, we're seeing some good things in both math and science, and that's important because one of the primary emphasis that we placed in our curriculum is on STEM education. And I think we'd all agree, even from an economic standpoint, that STEM is extremely important. So, some good results there. But understand, growth is different than proficiency. So, when you're looking at that student, what are you expecting? You expecting every student to score 90 to 100 on that exam? Or you're looking for the growth of that student at the beginning of the year to the end of the year? I tend to believe growth is important. Okay. Next slide is a summary statement, or summary slide. I was thinking about this last week. My mentor and a former superintendent was a gentleman by the name of Dr. Frank Yeager. He'd been a successful superintendent in about three different states. And he used to describe the performance, because I was a young assistant principal at the time, and I heard him talk about Buncombe County Schools in economic terms. And what he said was that our school district represents a moderate financial investment. And I know you guys are sitting up there and saying, and we do a whole lot more than moderate, but I'm talking about total, federal, state, local, moderate financial investment that produces high returns on that investment. I thought that was a good way to put it. Now, he said that over 25 years ago. My belief as superintendent is that that hasn't changed. We continue to put or to provide good returns on that investment. I'm going to let you read through those. Again, it's a comparison of the state to Buncombe County. And remember, the grades are based on that 15-point scale, and they're also based on that 80/20 formula. Now, I would also tell you that this would look, as far as our D schools, our three schools that receive Ds, that had that formula been shifted to 50% proficiency, 50% growth, those Ds would. that had that formula been shifted to 50% proficiency, 50% growth, those Ds would be zero. But I'd also tell you that the 3D schools are three of the highest socioeconomic challenge schools that we have in the entire county.
So now, so I've asked this question, I guess, you know, before about, so how would that change a school like Johnston? Just being specific, I guess, a great school and it's got, you know, 40 different nationalities and, you know, and a great committed, you know, team over there. And I know that they have had, you know, the scoring system's been kind of difficult for them.
That's a great question. And I would tell you that Johnston is one of those D schools, has been now for two years in a row. And you've been inside Johnston, I know that. In fact, I think, I think Mr. Presley's been inside, Mr. Whiteside may have been, you've been in there.
Quite a bit.
So, and I think you would agree with me that you cannot walk into a school anywhere in western North Carolina and find as hard a working, dedicated staff as you find in those schools. We literally, last year, I walked into school three times after there'd been a shooting in a nearby housing. Now, that's what those kids are facing. Walking in the door, normal day, and they're driving past police cars and a death. That's challenging. That's going back to the whole child. That's going back to the emotional health, the behavioral health that both of us are seeing. We need some help with. Back to your, back to your question, it would change it, that D would gone to a C because it's growth. It's what we should expect for those kids under that type of challenge.
Aren't current EOGs based primarily on proficiency versus growth?
I am so sorry, would you, could you ask that again, please?
End-of-grade testing, are those results not based primarily on proficiency versus growth?
That's correct.
So what I'm hearing, I just want to clarify, is that these numbers would look different if you focused on what the state shows right now, which is proficiency. You're showing growth to us, but state looks at proficiency.
Right. But what I'm saying, when you go back on the, on the grades themselves, that's not growth, but the grades. Johnston Elementary was one of the 3D schools. Had the formula changed for the grade itself, which is primarily 80% proficiency, 20% growth, was it 50-50? That D would have gone to a C.
But what are you showing us now? Proficiency, where does proficiency fall into this? I'm not sure.
Right. Right now, what you're looking at in terms of the grades, what you're looking at is performance based upon that formula, 80%, 20%.
And I hear you, I understand how important growth was. My husband taught math and growth was his stellar success. I understand, but when, I want to be able to compare apples to apples when we're talking about proficiency and growth between the two school districts. And I'm just trying to wrap my head around what your, what this looks like.
Well, it's no different in Ashville City and Buncombe County. They're under the same type of evaluation system as we are.
Right.
What you're seeing on that slide is based upon, is grades, and you can look, you can put any school system you want in North Carolina there. It's based upon 80% proficiency and 20% growth.
But the previous couple of slides-
Were growth entirely.
Right, so those are looking just at growth.
Those were growth.
This is talking about kind of the current status quo.
Right. The latest slide I gave you, the return on investment, that has to do with the grades based on the formula. It's not just growth. Right. Does that, does that help? Okay? All right, I'm going to show you two slides that I think are absolutely crucial to see and understand because it justifies statistically, this is out of SAS, out of Cary, North Carolina, who's internationally acclaimed for data analysis. What it did is it took state data. And over the years, you have, and I want to say this upfront, you as county commissioners have significantly improved our ability to recruit and retain quality teachers. Why? One of those reasons, you've generously allocated local supplements to our teachers. These slides demonstrate how important that investment is. Now, the line graph, the two line graphs that you see represent reading performance of two different populations of students across North Carolina. This is a North Carolina slide. This is not just Buncombe County or any one system. Both groups represent the students on both lines. They attend both 5th grade and 6th grade, two consecutive years. But here's the difference. The students on the blue line, the higher line that you see, were taught both years by highly qualified teachers. Where students in their classroom, their average in their classrooms exceeded growth. That deems them as highly qualified. The lower line represents students who were taught in 5th and 6th grade by teachers that failed to meet expected growth. Okay, so you have two different, you have actually two, two teachers on each line. The two on the upper line, highly qualified. The two on the lower line did not meet growth. Now, here's the important takeaway. Because when they followed up that research with those kids, when they left 6th grade, what they found out was that on average, the students on the lower level, the red line, never called up, on average, with the students on the blue line in reading. The impact of those two years with highly qualified versus not meeting growth, and so we talk, this is another way to look at a gap. It also is a way to say, it is absolutely crucial that you have quality teachers in your classroom. Because, again, you can have all sorts of interventions and programs, but it's that relationship, that teaching ability of that person in the classroom. So that, I thought that was pretty significant. And again, that statewide data shows the importance. We go to the next slide.
Dr. Baldwin?
Yes, sir.
So, so this is 2012 and 2013.
That's the, that's the most recent we could pull from SAS.
So since 2012 and 2013, we have expanded the intermediate school model in Buncombe County. Be interesting to see how, you know, the 5th and 6th grades together. Be interesting to see newer data and how that, you know, is affected.
I think that's a great point. And I think it'd be interesting to actually see what our data is for those intermediate schools.
I think so.
Because, again, logically, you would think you have those students, 5th and 6th graders, in the same building and you have the opportunity for those two, for those teachers to, to talk together, to plan together as they follow those students through. So absolutely, that would, that would be very interesting. Now, again, talking about a gap. What they found out in terms of math, same thing, 5th, 6th grades, top line, highly effective, highly qualified teachers. Bottom line, two teachers that, two years in a row that had failed to meet growth. And what we felt, they found out was when they followed these students, that the students on the lower line never truly called up in math to those on the upper line. So again, it tells that, it underscores how crucial it is to make sure that we not only hire high-quality teachers, but that we continue to provide professional development training for them. That's hard to do because time is, is a challenging thing for us. Okay? Dr. Patterson provided you a very similar slide. Over the past five years, we, like many school districts across the state, have faced decreased enrollments. And on average, each of the years, again, over the past five years, we've equaled a loss of about 1.5% of our students. Now, while our total still remains 23, over 23,000 students, that decrease represents a reduction of predominantly state dollars. Mr. Whiteside's referenced that. And here's the current impact. That loss of students for this current year resulted in a reduction of 658,959 state dollars. Now, if you equated that to a teacher salary, that roughly equates to the total cost of seven classroom teachers. That's a challenge. And what are we doing? I'm going to talk about that later, but you can, you can believe that we're in full marketing strategy mode. Marketing probably has never been talked about in traditional public schools on as many occasions this year than, than over the past maybe 20 years. It's a reality we face. And I thought you'd be interested in this. This is, again, these are state figures. I think Denise showed you something pretty similar to that. But it just, it's a pattern that we're all facing. Alternatives to traditional public schools and school choice. They've not only impacted our school district, but school systems across the entire state. Historically, and you may or may not know this, but historically, western North Carolina has maintained one of the highest homeschool populations in North Carolina. In fact, I know four years ago, we had a presentation that came to us as superintendents here in this region, and we were the third highest area in the state of North Carolina for homeschool education. Along with charter school growth and the positive economy has definitely advantaged the private schools, it's, it's a different world out there. It's a different world we face, and it has budget implications, no question about it. Any questions on that? Pretty clear patterns that you can see across the state.
I have a quick question, not necessarily related to this one. And working at a community college, I'm embarrassed, I don't know the answer to this. When you have a student dual enrolled, let's say at North Buncombe High School in AB Tech, does the school system lose the funding for that student? Or do you still receive funding for dual-enrolled students?
Dual enrolled to AB Tech?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Or the community, another community college.
Ms. Frisby's work, we retain that funding.
You do retain the funding, okay.
Now, if that particular student goes to a charter school, we're looking at a different, different mechanism.
Right, I understand that. I just wasn't sure how the dual enrollment worked for funding.
We really encourage that, by the way.
I appreciate that.
Quick question, Dr. Baldwin, and thank you for the presentation. Could you, just because there are folks who are tuning into this, and this is a question I get a lot, and I'd just love to hear you answer it kind of in layperson's terms. Walk us through your response to the question, enrollments declining, shouldn't funding decline too?
Well, let me go back to numbers with, at least in my brains, trying to look at some simple math and simple comparisons. We're talking about a system with 23,000 students in it. So we approximately lost from 1718 to 1819 around 321 students, I think. But you've got to remember, those 321 students don't just come in nice, just big packages and all of a sudden, they're coming out of one high school. So you're just draining the 9th and 10th grade. It's spread over. So what happens when you spread it over, as big a system as we are, the impact really doesn't change in terms of the number of teachers that you need in a classroom. It could possibly change a Johnston Elementary from, in a 3rd grade classroom, it could change 25 students down to 22 students. But you still need the one teacher. You just don't eliminate it. So, but it's hard to understand. That is a question I get too. And it is difficult to understand because you think, you know, it's a direct relationship. You lose that many, you lose those dollars, well, you just simply lose that many staff. Because you're going to see in the slide, 86% of our operating budget is in personnel. That's extremely high. Did that answer?
Perfectly, thank you, that's very helpful.
Okay. Now, this is a slide you're going to have to look at on the paper, but it's an important slide. And this is, we're really moving toward budget. I know you have a relief, relief on your face, Chairman Newman, when I said that. As you can see in this slide, our current per-student expenditure, and this is state, federal, and local funds, is $9,408. So in the upper bracket, you have Buncombe County broken down, and below you have the state average. So you can follow that in terms of state, local, and federal. It's important to note, however, that the amount of local funding that's allocated to each Buncombe County school student currently ranks us 15th. If you looked at it total, we rank 57th. Federal, state, and local, we're about the middle of the pack. There's 115 school systems. But when you look at local, we're ranked 15th. And it puts us as one of the highest districts in the state. In fact, and this is a really good feel-good slide for you. I don't know how that equates in dollars, but this is a feel-good slide for you as commissioners and for prior commissioners that sat in your chair, by the way. Over the past five years, the amount of local dollars you have provided our students has increased over 36%. Now, I'll also argue we needed every dollar of it because we've got state and federal funds that are moving in the opposite direction. But as, as a county commission across this, compared to your peers across the state, I think that's a very powerful statement that you've made about public education. So I do want to add that in. You may also be interested in knowing how we rank compared to fellow school districts within the mountain region. Dr. Patterson and I belong to Region 8. That's about 15 school systems in the western part of the state. Our total per-pupil expenditure is a bit above our neighbors in Haywood and Henderson. Compared to Asheville City, it, there's a considerably different result. In fact, the average expenditure is around $2,800 higher than students in Buncombe County. Again, the difference of $2,800 per student between Buncombe County students and Asheville City students. I don't say that in any way, shape, or form negative toward Asheville City. In fact, I applaud that. I applaud what the city government has done in terms of recognizing the importance of education for the city. But this, this, this is the reality in terms of budgeting. So I wanted to share that with you because comparison locally, comparisons locally are important. Any questions? Is this good information? It breaks it down to the best of our ability.
It's really good information. Just real quick question. Why is there the difference between our school system in Buncombe and other counties around the state in terms of state funding? Because isn't it, so, and I'm, it's probably a long answer, so, and I don't want to take too much of your time on that, but why is there, why are we ranked so low in state funding relatively?
Well, there's some incentive-type funding that goes for the particularly low county funding that comes from the state. If you meet a certain criteria with your numbers, then you get additional funds. That's one.
Right.
Federal government can, the federal funding can change considerably. That can fluctuate depending upon the particular demographics in your county.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Now, our next slide is one of my favorite topics, fund balance. And I will, I know you, I know you know this, but Buncombe County school policy calls for the equivalent of one month's operating expenses to be held as unrestricted funding for each school year. Okay? Unrestricted funds. Just to give you a number, for Buncombe County schools this year, that is about $4.8 million. That's one month. And it's local current expense, one month's operating expense is $4.8 million. This slide indicates, because this is over five years, a pattern of ever-decreasing fund balance that is available to carry over to the next year. So just, just to help you read through that graph, where you see the number, the dollar number up at the top of that graph, at each point, that represents the dollars that remained at the end of the school year, undesigned, that could be utilized the following year. Okay? I had to work on that because I had it absolutely backwards. But the dollar figure is what's left at the end of the year, not designated, to move forward. Our projection for the current school year is $2.5 million of undesigned fund balance. That's, that's the target. That's what we project. We've got a lot of four-leaf clovers, Ms. Frisby's office, but that's, that's what we're shooting for. This current year in particular has been a tough year. We had a higher-than-projected state retirement rate. We had a higher-than-projected state retirement rate. I think you were aware of that. That was $254,000 that we weren't expecting. We had unanticipated principal salary raises, and we are thankful for that from the state. We cheered our principals. They deserve every dollar of it. But that was $175,000, unexpected. We had utility costs increase. That had to impact Buncombe County as well. That was $378,000 in utility rate increases this year. And we had a reduction of half a million dollars to the local requests that came to you last year.
Dr. Baldwin, hey, I just want to do a quick time check. I think we have about 10 minutes left before we're going to need to go to AB Tech, so I just kind of wanted a flat amount of time.
I'll scramble as fast as I can.
Great.
The challenge of meeting that requirement is very difficult, if not impossible, to meet that one month's operating expenses. So I want to put that out there. I also want to say that part of what I think all of us dealt with this year is the climate and the weather, serious issues of flooding in the eastern part of the state. It's delayed funding. We are still, by the way, waiting on federal funds that normally come to us in January. We still haven't seen them. So you've got to have fund balance in order to afford fund for that. You ask why we need fund balance? This is a great year to see why we need that. The next two slides are familiar to you. I'll cut these short. You can see that, again, we depend predominantly on state funds, 63%. Next high source, local funds that come from you, the commission, and finally, 8% of operating funds from the federal government. I'm going to stop here again, just to talk about the timeline, because this is crucial for me to hopefully make you understand that we are in a timeline dilemma, all three of us, when we come up here in front of you. That state budget, all we've seen is the governor and the House. We're far from seeing the Senate or what the final budget's going to be. May not be until September, October. We don't know. But we're giving you numbers that are crystal ball projections. So what I would like for you to think about is the opportunity for us, once that state budget is finalized, to return back and basically, let's review these numbers, because the significant amount we're going to ask you for has to do directly with the state budget. Okay, next slide's pie graph, significant majority of operating funds. We are a people business. Human resources, 87% of our funding goes there, salaries and benefits. Okay? Lopez, 17. All right. The next two slides represent our request for additional recurring funds to address any costs due to the state increases in employee salaries or contributions to health insurance and retirement. Now, here's the key number to remember. 712 of our employees in Buncombe County schools are paid through local dollars, and so the state decisions in these areas impact them. And these are the same categories of requests superintendents decades ago stood in front of commission and asked for. It's going to come to you every year because of the need to cover state increases in those three areas. And again, it's a timeline dilemma, but you see those numbers. Let's go to 18. I want to clarify, because this is important. You see up there on that bottom line, a request to maintain 20 current instructional assistant positions. Calls of reduced state funds, depleted fund balance, I've shown you that. And by the way, the tricky part, Dr. Pender, I think you'd agree with me, is it's not appropriate to use fund balance to pay for recurring costs. Now, at times, that happens in emergencies, but that's not the best way to use fund balance. We've identified a reduction of 40 instructional assistant positions for next year. In kindergarten through third grade, we currently budget $8,470,440 for 232 instructional assistant positions. The state covers 192 of those. That's all the state funds cover. That leaves 40 positions not covered by local funds. And while the state, what the state did do with the K-3 mandate, you saw with Dr. Patterson, is they allotted funds for teachers, for additional teachers, but not teacher assistants. Right now, we have one assistant for each kindergarten, each first-grade classroom, and we have one for every five second and third-grade classrooms. This reduction basically maintains the one in each kindergarten class and one in each first-grade classroom. And due to the size of those, of our system, because we are large, 13th largest in the state, we project that half of those positions, half of those 40, will basically be handled through attrition. Attrition is retirement, it's people taking new jobs, it's people leaving jobs, and while these positions would be eliminated, there would be no elimination of people based on attrition. You understand? So that is, attrition doesn't require essentially laying off anybody.
I have a question.
The additional 20 positions that we come to you, those do, those will require potentially layoffs. So that's a dilemma. We have to try to right the ship in terms of where our budget is.
I do have a question about the instructional assistants. I know you've talked about being in the people business and working one-on-one with students really helps ensure their growth, from my understanding of being somewhat ingrained in the educational world. Those folks tend to play a really significant role in the success of children when the teacher's working with other groups. So how can you make up for that loss in terms of the added benefit that they provide to the teachers and particularly to the students?
It's very difficult, and what you're seeing more and more of our principals doing, because this is not just unique to Buncombe County. You're seeing this across the state. In fact, in some of the eastern systems, assistants have been eliminated. The option was to use teachers to reduce the class size. Again, I would not, everything you said is absolutely correct. They are extremely valuable. But when we reach a point where diminished state funds, and for a lot of principals now, they're looking at volunteers to try to make that up, that's really hard as a principal, because a volunteer, even though we have some dedicated volunteers, they're not committed to being there every single day. So it is a challenge. I think it means reaching into the community, getting more assistance and help, but again, when we reach 86% of personnel and we're looking at funds decreasing, we have to go somewhere. We have always maintained classroom teachers and certified teachers as a top priority. We've done that. This is not new. Since 2009, 2010, I became superintendent, and I guess this is what I got. It's not changed. So this is a dilemma for us. And very quickly, the behavior specialists, you saw very similar to what, let's back that up a little bit, or go forward, Cynthia, I'm sorry. We're asking for seven additional positions for our behavioral health. This would support each of the six districts, and it would also give a staff member devoted toward our non-traditional schools, Nesbit Middle and Early College. Currently, we have six specialists and four behavior assistants. Listen to what they've done already this year. They've worked directly one-on-one with 274 students. They've conducted 47 staff development trainings, and that's impacted 1,600 of our teachers and staff members in our schools. That's phenomenal. But I will tell you this, if I brought every one of our principals in this room, and I asked them what is the number-one concern that they have, the most significant need, they're going to come to you with behavioral health. I think you heard that loud and clear with Asheville City. This is what we hear, and many of you have heard that as well. So that's added to that request. I'm going to go ahead, let's move to the summary. You have that provided. Let's go to the next slide. We talked about retention strategies. One thing I do want to pay or ask you to see is that we are looking at opening a virtual academy, and that virtual academy will allow us to do, to have some online courses to attract especially our home school population. If we can attract them to a couple of online courses, maybe add a course on campus, whatever it may be. It may be in the arts. It may be an ROTC, it may be some, it may be a core class. But that's one of the key strategies that we're going to put in place, because we've got to address that population. Global Ed, we now have a dual-language program in every one of our six districts, and it's one of the hottest items. We've had parents, by the way, call us with two- and three-year-olds wanting to make sure that they're on the list for the dual-language program. That's powerful. We're a large system. Thank goodness it took us years to get there, but we're there. And with that, I'll leave you with one last slide. Take a look at this graduation, cohort graduation rate. Thank you, thank you. Graduation initiative back in 2004. You provided funding for it, and you can see the results. Cohort graduation, you asked this question before. This is a ninth grader walking in with their ninth-grade class and graduating with their peers four years later. So you can see, we've reached that point where we exceeded the state average on it. So I think that was one of the pieces of information that you asked for.
You finishing up? I just got, you don't have to respond to this, Dr. Baldwin, I just, for additional information going forward, you know, as it pertains to teacher assistants, okay? I would like, you know, I would like to know, you know, there's been a, we know the difference it makes in the first and, in the kindergarten, first and second grade. It's critical, right? We all agree on that. So if that is true, then, and I'm not diminishing the importance of behavioral health, okay? Then, you know, I would like to see the information on what does it cost to keep them there? We got, you know, F schools that are going to see, what's the, you know, I mean, we've made major steps in the past, the state has, and this local commission has, when it comes to teacher pay. We've made a major commitment to that.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And I don't, you know, I don't want to see the teacher assistants left behind in that. It's critical in those first, you know, we would be very hypocritical as a commission if we're going to invest, you know, all this money in early childhood education, and we just drop them in the first and second grade. That's, you know, and I hear, you know, and this is not directed at you, you know that. You know that. It is not directed, you're not directed at the system. But I want to see some facts on, personally, on teacher assistants. How many we have? How many, there's a possibility of losing? How much money does it take to keep them? What schools are they in? You know, I would like to see that. I don't want it to just kind of go away, because we've kind of fought this battle the last couple of years, and we've increased their pay some, and I just don't want to, I don't want to see that, see that.
I'll be glad to get you further information.
See that happen. I mean, we need to dig in on that a little bit, and we don't need to, I don't need to point fingers anywhere else on what that is. Let's look at the math and look at the numbers and see what.
So commissioners, we are, we are a little bit past time.
I'm done.
We may need to go a little bit past 4:30 to make sure we give AB Tech all the time they need to.
I would love to schedule a follow-up, since we've had a number of conversations with Dr. Patterson. I have some follow-up questions on racial equity and what Buncombe County schools happens to be doing in terms of hiring diverse teachers and signing bonuses, et cetera. So I think a follow-up may be really helpful. I have a lot of questions.
I would agree with that. I personally would agree with that. So let's, when we get through everything, we'll kind of do, maybe do a quick debrief on kind of what's next in terms of follow-up on education funding. I would also ask, Dr. Baldwin, you know, the list of questions I sent to the city schools, I sent basically the exact same list to the county schools with like one difference that just was not relevant to the county schools. But yeah, it'd be great if we could get written answers from the county schools on those two. I know that you just got it, so I wouldn't expecting all that to be organized from either district today necessarily, but it'd be great to get that. I'm sure we'd love to read that information, and then we'll talk about kind of what are the questions and information folks would like to get over the next month or two. Thank you very much. Any other questions, folks feel like we, burning question you've got to ask right now? All right. Thank you, everyone from county schools as well for being here, and AB Tech is up next. Dr. King, good to see you.
Thank you. Let me begin by making a couple comments. First of all, Saturday will be our graduation, and we will be, for the first time ever, giving more than 1,000 degrees, diplomas, and certificates. That's 1,000 people whose lives have been changed because of your community college. That will be Saturday afternoon at 2 o'clock in the civic auditorium area, and we look forward to sharing that success with those folks, particularly those individuals who have gotten a quick certificate so that they can get out and get a job. That's all been going very nicely, and again, I thank you for the support that has caused that to happen this year. The second thing I wanted to say was, thank you again for the $3.3 million worth of repairs that have gone into our buildings this year. This has just been fantastic. Two, three buildings have had major renovations, and at least two other buildings have had minor activities done to them, such as new HVAC systems. I guess that's not all that minor, but a lot is going on on our campus. You will see again this year about another $3.6 million worth of repairs going on on the campus. So again, thank you for all of that. We appreciate the support to the infrastructure of the college. My presentation is going to be remarkably simple. We're going to start with this chart, which shows you that this year, you gave us $6.5 million for our operating budget. We had $1.29 million in a cash reserve, and so we are spending someplace in the vicinity of $7.7 million. At the end of the year, we project that we will have spent all of the money that you gave us, plus the 1.2, the majority of the 1.2 million that we had in a cash reserve. And at the end of the year, we anticipate having a cash reserve of $70,000. That is about 1% of our budget, our county budget, that is. We are asking this year for $7.63 million. The next slide shows where that money would go this year. We are asking for $3.3 million in salaries and benefits, $2.1 million in operating, and a utility amount of a little over $2 million. And on the next slide, you'll see how we're going to use this money. We will be using $124,000 for a 2% pay raise to the county's employees. As you know, the county's responsibility is for our safety and our physical plant personnel. The state, when they give us a 2% raise, as we anticipate this year, does not include a raise for your employees. And so last year, we asked for 1%. The state gave 2.5%, and I beg your pardon, 2%, and we had to make that up from that cash, that fund balance. So this year, the state anticipates a 2% raise for employees, and we're asking you for $124,000 to give that same raise to our employees. We will also add a computer-assisted design position in our maintenance area. Utilities will go up by $437,000, and that's principally because the state has told us that we cannot charge telecommunication to it any longer. Under North Carolina statutes, they have decided that utilities are, I beg your pardon, telecommunication is the responsibility of the county. And so to pick that up, we need $437,000 there. There's also a $488,000 difference between what we spent this year, what we need to operate, and the 6.5- operate, and the 6.5 million that you gave us last year. And so that would be, that's another part of the increase here. Bottom line, in our budget, we are asking.
Dr. King, before you leave that last slide, go ahead, Mr. Belcher.
Yeah, back up just a minute.
Yep.
I think we addressed number two already. Is it 488? Is it 488 we addressed?
There's a shortfall that we were going to pay over a period of time. Is that the same thing or not? Stop.
Okay.
Never mind.
So the 437, that's, we say all telecommunications, like all phone expenses or what exactly is that?
Phone expenses.
The state just said we're not paying that for community colleges anymore?
That's correct.
Across the state?
Yes. It's that statute that we recognize there that some, it's a, a responsibility that the state has determined is that of the county and not of the state any longer.
Okay.
So in the end, we're asking for $7.5 million. That's a little over $1 million more than you gave us this year. And that's again because we spent the, your, the carryover of your money that we have had over the years. We've spent that down to $70,000 right now. So that's why we are asking for it in the increase. Basically, that's it on the, on the budget. Questions?
I've got a couple. So what's, what's, what's going on with the Inca Campus? What's the, what are the plans for what's happening there now and going forward?
As one looks at the entryway of the property, the building on the right, which is a, what we used to call the Haynes Tower, and all the land in that direction is up for sale. We were supposed to have a meeting yesterday to discuss the offer that we've been given by a developer for that land. As it turned out, the meeting was not properly noticed and so we had to cancel it. But we will be go, meeting, meeting with the, the buyer, the potential buyer, and making a decision at the executive committee level and then that will go to the entire board perhaps as early as June. The developer is very interested in it. The rest of the property is going to remain in our possession and we intend to continue to use it. So there, you know, while there was a question among a number of people as to what we would do with the Inca property, we're selling part of it, we're keeping part of it, and we intend to remain there.
So, so you have full commitment to all the programming that's going on at the Inca Campus?
I'm not sure I understand the term full commitment.
I mean, you're not planning on canceling any of the programming?
No, sir. Nothing.
Or any of the things that's going on that's impacting the community in a positive way right now?
Yeah, absolutely. There's nothing that's going on there that we intend to cancel. The Small Business Incubator is doing very nicely. It has over 20 clients in there. The Blue Ridge Food Ventures is in there. Our brewing, distillation, fermentation program is doing nicely out there. Everything that's there, we're going to continue and as a matter of fact, we're looking to put some other things out there.
Are there any other campus expansions in other parts of the county that are, the colleges focused on right now or?
Well, when we.
So I know there's been different ideas about, you know, what to be co-located at the main campus, Inca. Any other, any other just kind of general physical footprint changes that are being contemplated, short-term, long-term?
When we had a study done six years ago, we were told that the county is growing to the south and as a consequence, we ought to be in the southern part of the county. We looked at a number of pieces of property out there and nothing ever materialized. We then went into a joint venture with Mars Hill University on Airport Road and that has done very well by us. I don't think Mars Hill is, we've, we've both done well out there. What we need is more space in the south part of the county. There are a lot of things, particularly in the continuing education area such as English as a Second Language that we would like to offer and we don't have room for it. We're negotiating with Mars Hill to buy a portion of their, I beg your pardon, to rent a portion of the land if it ever becomes available. And that's where we are right now out there.
Is there room at the Inca Campus to do that English as a Second Language?
Ah, yes.
It'd be a great place to do it with the Hispanic population out there. It would be.
That building that we're retaining has not had any major work done on it in, well, in my presidency and certainly a lot longer than that. We need a new roof on that building. As soon as we get the, the joint committee between the college and this board put together, we intend to bring a project to them for approximately 1 to 1.7, I believe it is. 1.9 for a new roof on that TCC building. So yes, there's a lot of room in the building. Much of it is, is either not developed, we don't have a CO on it, or it's in an area that needs a new roof.
Of the county employees, oh, go ahead, Ron.
No, just going to ask a machine shop at the Inca Campus. You didn't mention it. How's it doing?
How, how is it doing? It's doing well. Everything that we've got going out on the Inca Campus is doing well. We're renovating a building on the, on the main campus using state funds that will have a, a new machine shop in it. There's some equipment that we were given by Duke Energy a number of years ago that we're going to set up in there. We're really renovating two, two buildings on campus. One that used to be your old daycare and that building is going to take everything off the ground floor of the Maple Building. And when that happens, that will become that new machine shop.
I would just encourage you on the, on the Inca Campus, and we'll go back to that for a little bit.
Yeah.
If you're planning on putting a new roof on there, you're going to, you're going to sell part of it. And you've got some room, you've got, you're not selling part of that building. I understand what you're selling. You know, that, you know, rather than looking at new buildings in the south or whatever, you know, build that, build that building out. You know, if you've got the programming there, build that building out. You're going to have, it's, it's a growth area. You've got, you know, proximity to, you know, all the major, you know, roads and there would be, if you're, if you're going to bring a $1.6 million roof, then you need to also be thinking about what's going to be under that roof.
Yes. Thank you for that.
And I think all that, I think all that should go together personally.
Question I have, of the county employees that you have in Buncombe Tech?
Yes.
Who we pay for, how many, I mean, how many make up that group?
I believe you have a list in front of you in one of those documents. Dirk, you shared that? There's, there's a large list which shows the people who are paid from Buncombe County. Dirk tells me there's approximately 60 people that you pay for.
60?
Yeah.
All them making?
60.
60. All of them making a living wage?
Yes. Yes. Everybody at AB Tech makes a living wage.
Good.
Thank you for that.
Mm-hmm.
And if, if we have not shared this, I'll be glad to leave it with you.
It looks like we do have that copy. It looks like it has been located in our, we have a lot of paper on our desk right now.
Dr. King, thanks for that presentation. Could you kind of share a 30,000-foot view of what y'all are seeing right now in terms of enrollment and any emergent trends related to the types of fields or degrees folks, or certifications folks are attracted to, especially given sort of what we're seeing around economic growth right now?
There's a phenomenon in higher education, particularly at the community college level, that there's an inverse proportion, an inverse direction, I guess is a better way of putting it, between the economy and enrollment. When the economy does well, our enrollment drops off. Conversely, and we saw this in 2009, 2010, when the economy is in bad shape, our enrollment goes up. There are a number of reasons for that. First of all, federal financial aid is available, the Pell Grant. And when a student can't get a job, our tuition is so low that the individual may be able to bankroll a little bit of money from his Pell Grant. So that's one reason why when somebody can't get a job in a bad economy, he looks to go into school. The other reason, in a good economy, is that our students, probably being a little nearsighted, if you will, will be able to get one, two jobs and may be able to carry away enough money so that they feel they, they can take care of themselves. Those jobs are the first ones to leave when the economy goes south again. And as a consequence, the student is oftentimes left without a job and without an education. Even the ones who stay with us, instead of taking 12 credits, will take three or six credits because they can get a job. So our enrollment is down, not, not appreciably, we're down by about 300 students out of seven, over 7,000. But the, the trend right now, because of the economy being as good as it is, is downward. And that's a national phenomenon, not an AB Tech thing.
You know, a question I have, are you working closely with companies like Lenimar and GE Aviation? Because, you know, when I visit those companies, I hear that they're having trouble finding qualified employees and those are good jobs for this area.
Absolutely. We, we train all the employees for GE Aviation, all the new employees. That's a ceramic activity there and they have to learn.
Yeah, the parts.
How to make parts out of ceramics. So yes, we, we do all of their, 100% of their training for their people. Same thing with Lenimar. We are, we have an entire division in the Maple Building, which is the one that I was just referring to where the machine shop is going to be on the ground floor, on the basement floor. We have an entire operation there, working all the time with industry. And then we also work trying to bring industry into the county. The, I can never pronounce their name, Nakon or the newest.
The Canadian company?
Yes, thank you. The Canadian HVAC company. Told us directly, they came to Asheville because of AB Tech training. So we, we, we will continue that.
So Hakon came because of AB Tech training and a really great bridge.
Yes, a really great bridge.
Well, now I'll be going to somewhere.
Going somewhere, isn't it?
Other questions?
I guess, just kind of sticking on the same topic. Dr. King, in the paper had a great story this week about, you know, the economy is good right now, there's a lot of good-paying jobs out there that, you know, as Commissioner Whiteside said, are, are not being filled as quickly as people would like. Do we, is there more that we could do to kind of help people connect the dots on that? You know, because I think people see stories like that and they think, oh, wow, there's all these really good opportunities. But I think to a lot of people, it's still a bit mysterious about how you go from kind of where you are to like getting one of those really good jobs. So how do we help people kind of understand, like, here's, you know, here's the jobs that are out there and the really specific pathways to get, you know, the skills that you would need to be qualified to, to get there?
You've, you've touched on a very difficult project, problem. And the, the issue really is, I think, with the 18-year-old coming out of high school, it is what parents want versus what perhaps the student wants. Specifically, what I'm talking about is so many times, we have students tell us that I've gone through a four-year degree program at a university and I have a degree in history or psychology and I'm coming back to AB Tech to get a career now. Over half of the students in the brewing program have bachelor's degrees. Over 75% of the students in the nursing program have bachelor's degrees or higher. In most of our programs where we are training people for good jobs, they are people, a large number of them are people who have gotten a bachelor's degree and can't get a job in that field. Parents, on the other hand, have a picture of, I wish I could walk them all through GE Aviation and Lenimar and show them what a fantastic place that it would be to work in those facilities. These jobs are not dirty jobs. These are good jobs that earn a living, well, much more than a living wage. We have a young man, I'll be speaking about him at graduation, young man who just finished one of our, our welding programs. And he is now out there right now making $60,000 a year. Two years at AB Tech, $60,000 a year. It's a, it's a fantastic return on investment, but it's the attitude of the public. I don't want my, my son, my daughter, working in these fields.
So I, I think that's true. So, but folks who, for folks who do have the kind of orientation that you're, I think, trying to encourage.
Yeah.
You know, and do we do enough to kind of help them understand in really specific ways? Like here, here's the opportunities in our community and here's, you know, and here's kind of the, you know, the pathways to get connected to those, you know, the specific opportunities that are out there.
You just touched on one thing called the pathways. We have three different people in all of the high schools that we serve. We serve a total of nine high schools. And we have three different people who go in there and are constantly talking to students about these kinds of jobs. We also about, I guess a month ago, a little bit less than that, had all of the seniors who were interested in visiting, the number was over 700, all of the seniors who were interested came to AB Tech and we had a, a day where they could see the various programs, talk to the instructors and get a feel for these jobs. I mean, if there's an idea that we can use to get students interested in the college, we do it.
So, so I want to get on my soapbox for just a minute for that, since we got, we got a little bit of time. And I'm glad that the city schools are still here. I think there's still some representative, the other county schools still here too, so good. So the career and technical, Kristy Cheek, who's.
Yes.
If she was here, I'd give her a big, big hug. But, you know, when I, when I was in, in school, it was college prep and vocational training, right? Some of y'all remember that. So college prep was whatever, what I wanted to do and was, was pushed towards and it worked, worked for me because I've told this story before, maybe not in here, I was in West Virginia, I was scared to death of the coal mines, knew I did not want to go in that direction, had some people help me go to, to the other way, okay? Well, my brother went towards, he was the mechanic, I was not. He went the other way. He did very well. And he's still, still there. And like I said, he did, he did very well. And so I think that the, the, the three schools, I'm just going to give you my opinion, the three schools, this has to start in middle school. This has to start early. Back work, you know, where you have the career days and you have somebody that's coming in that's a mason, you have GE coming in. I've mentioned before, from a marketing standpoint, you know, you have, you get with GE, you get with Lenimar and, you know, and somewhere in, in one of your schools, you turn a corner and there's a, you know, you know, a small mock-up of the engine or you have, you know, Asheville Technologies which, you know, makes, if you go out there, they have.
Satellites.
You know, camo satellite issues, you know? And so, and some of the things that the parents need to know early, so that, that my child can actually, my child does not have to go to college if it is not a fit for that child. And there are great incomes out there for them and actually, they can start right out of high school making, you know, 15, 16 dollars an hour at Lenimar and, and GE and, you know, and, and other schools are, are doing this. And I'm not saying that the city school or the county schools are not doing this, but I'm saying we're not doing it at a, at a world-class or national model level. And, and that's what we got to, we need to get to. And all these are going to work together because these people are going to, you know, a lot of them will, will work here, they'll stay here, you know, they don't end up in the, in the, in the military or nothing wrong with that. They don't end up, when they get right out of high school, going in, in, you know, trying to find themselves by going into the military or other places like that. But they can go directly and work at one of these, these companies, Baldor, whoever it might be, and, and begin there, straight out of high school, and be paid a, a, a good living and then have the opportunity to grow with that company and have an opportunity to come over and, and take classes from you and then. and, and take classes from you, and in most cases, they're gonna pay for it. And so, this is a really big conversation. I, I believe that if it's presented properly to every student and parent in Buncombe County, it'll help the achievement gap. It'll help every way, because there are just some people that, when they're sitting at home and they're sitting around the kitchen table, and they have conversations about college, they go, honey, I'm sorry. You, you're just not gonna be able to do that. But there's plenty that they can do. You know, and there's testing and some things. I just think as a county that we manage just so, I don't have the answer, you know, have the vision and the, and the heart for seeing some of it being, being done, but I think that we're gonna have to come together in a, in a summit kind of fashion and bring the, all the, the three systems together and, and really, really go after this. And I think the, the results will be, will be amazing. You know, there's place, there's organizations like Skills USA across this, across this country that are, that are promoting the skills gap, and there are some places that are going after it wide open. And I think in Buncombe County, you know, we, we have some people that have the passion for that, and maybe, you know, we need to look at throwing resources or time or marketing, you know, and letting people know that there's answers out there for their, for their kids that don't see college as a fit.
You know, we're starting something this fall. I, I guess it's probably not exactly what, it's not exactly what you're talking about, but it's another gift to the community, I think. There are so many people out there who've got five, ten, twenty college credits and no degree for it. We are starting a program called the Associate in Science in General Education, where somebody can bring in those credits and take a few more with us, perhaps even test out of various courses to get college credit for what they've learned, and we, we're expecting to graduate a number of people that way.
Well, I appreciate what you do to the school.
Thank you, thank you.
It fills, it fills a great need in the, in the community. Appreciate it.
Mr. Boucher, is this your birthday wish?
My birthday? Yeah, that's my, that, that would be, yeah, if I blew out some candles and I closed my eyes, that would be a birthday wish, that families sitting around their kitchen table would be talking about their kids going to work at, at Lennimar. Absolutely, that would be one of them. Thank you. That, that would be my wish. And move, and he said, "and moving out," yeah.
All right, Commissioners, other questions for AB Tech? All right. Thanks so much for the information. We appreciate it. I'm sure there'll be other follow-up questions as we dig into the information that you've presented. We are, we actually do have a couple minutes left. There was, what was, I'm sorry, what was the question that we had that we thought maybe we would come back to if there was time? I think it was a city school question, and I can't remember what the question was off the top of my head. Was it, was it about the, which, it wasn't my question, so...
It, it, what it was, it was the, oh, gosh, you had it. Yeah, but it was, it was, what was the numbers of, you know where, Matt? Do you know where it is? There it is, okay.
We're trying to get a number, whether it's five hundred and some students, you know, one point six percent of what.
So, I went ahead and pulled the last five years, the prior five years, even though the document you have goes all the way back twenty years. I didn't have sufficient time to do that. But looking at our numbers, and I'll be happy to share this document that I've revised, in the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year, there was, the dropout rate was one point seven two percent. That was twenty-four students, all students. But of those students, the students that were black were less than ten. This is reported from a state site. In sixteen seventeen, we had a three point zero four percent dropout rate in Asheville City, meaning forty-two students. Twenty-one of those students were black students. So, fifty percent of the students who dropped out in sixteen seventeen were black students. Going back to the year two thousand fifteen, sixteen, one point nine nine percent dropout. For the city, twenty-eight total students, eleven students were black students. Fourteen fifteen, there were a total of forty-two students that dropped out. Twelve students were black students. And then thirteen fourteen, there were thirty-nine total students, two dropped out. Twenty of those students were black students. And I'm happy to share this document with you, Chairman Newman. Certainly.
I guess just one, one other question, because I'm still just making sure I wanna understand the math, the math right on it. So, so like of the kids who start in ninth grade, is there, is there another way to say, like, what percentage of them graduate?
So, you wanna track a cohort. Track a group of...
I'm not sure if I do or not.
Track a group of students. I think that's what you're asking, to track an entire group of students from the beginning of their ninth-grade career all the way. Are you looking at tracking from the beginning of their school career specifically, K all the way to twelve? What would you like? And I'd be happy to see if I can pull that information.
Yeah, and I know that, and I know that, you know, kids transfer and things like that. It's not always possible to track where every single person ends up in the, in the, in the world. But if there's a way to just, because I guess I'm, I am just admitting my ignorance. I still don't quite understand the one percent, two percent, three percent stat. So, if there's another way to make that a little clearer, that's what I'm looking for.
And I can, I can work on pulling that data for you, the cohort, so you can look at specifically. I think what you're asking is a group of students that start with us in, say, ninth grade all the way to the twelfth grade, and I'll be happy to...
Yeah, right. What percentage get, and get a diploma, right?
One more data request in the same subject area. If, if, when you pull that, you could also just pull the, the, the raw number of African-American students who are graduating per year, so we can, so we could figure, drill down to the percentage of African-American students who are graduating in a given cohort. Not just the, not just the percentage of the total students who have dropped out, but understanding, understanding the percentage of children who are dropping out, or students who are dropping out relative to the numbers, the percentage that are graduating.
So, I would be able to pull that. It will take a little time. I would look at the graduation rate and then disaggregate by ethnicity.
Yeah, of course. Whenever you have that.
Yeah, and the, you know, the economic status, economically challenged, you know, because it sounds like that you're saying that forty to fifty percent have been African-American, correct? Any given year? Is that what I'm hearing?
The lowest was in fourteen fifteen, and twenty-eight percent of the students who dropped out were, were black African-American students out of forty-two. There were twelve out of forty-two. So, there is a, a fluctuation, I think that's...
So, the, so the dropout rate extends beyond that, you know, diversity. It's probably going into the economic status of all of those students.
I would say that the data would probably support that, but without pulling it specifically, I'll be happy to...
Yeah, and we would want to know, you know, all that, I would think. It's helpful.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, thank you again to the city schools, county schools, and AB Tech. We appreciate the work that all of you do in this really important part of what local government and our academic institutions are here to do. So, thank you all. And I'm sure there will be follow-up questions. Commissioners, any other, just kind of initial debrief on, I think we're gonna get some additional information. Got any additional thoughts about what information you're gonna want to get as part of this process? Or do you need a little more time to think about that, or any initial thoughts at this time?
I have a, I would, the information that was just requested of Asheville City Schools for the dropout by race and economic disadvantage students would be helpful from the county as well. I'm also curious, I mean, they also have students of color and multiracial students. Any type of equity plan that you have in place? I've looked at your North Carolina School Report Card, and only five percent of African-American students and only five percent of multiracial students are in AP classes in the county. So, seems to me that there are some challenges within equity that I'm just curious to hear about how are being addressed.
Okay. All right. Well, so, thank you again. I think we just, let's get the information that comes in, and then we will kind of talk about whether we need to have another, you know, kind of formal session. You know, there have been some great meetings, you know, folks I know go to the different school board meetings sometimes. There's been some meeting of the small commissioners, but these are really important issues. I'm certainly happy to meet with people anytime, but I do think there's a lot of value in kind of everyone being together to kind of hear all the same information. So, if we do need to have some follow-up questions, I think probably this is the best way to do it, just so everyone's kind of, you know, getting all the same data and learning together about the answers to the different questions people have. I, I appreciate hearing the questions other folks have and the answers to them. All right. So, if there's no other questions right now, I think we're gonna adjourn, and then we're gonna re-adjourn in about a half an hour for a regular meeting.